Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Tanya Bowers.
Present.
Paul Mendez.
Present.
Kim Laraman.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myram. Absent. Rachel Teal. Absent. Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are six members present. We do have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191 and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting will also be recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on-demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available online on the City of Pasco website, so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask the audience that you mute your microphones and cell phones to prevent interruptions during our meetings. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please raise your hand so that we know you'd like to address the commission. Speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience that the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission, the Washington State law requires that public meetings, like the one being held this evening, not only be fair but appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits the Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may either be benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it'll be waived. First of all, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on our agenda? Let the record show that none declared. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any of the Planning Commission members hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show there were also no declarations. As we, we as the Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is our only opportunity, or your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed onto the official record of the city council that we'll use in its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of the opportunity. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from March 17th, 2022. These meeting minutes were mailed out both in traditional mail as well as online or via email to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had the opportunity to take a look at these meeting minutes and I would encourage or entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes at this time.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 17th.
I second Jay Handler. I have a motion from, I think Commissioner Bowers and seconded by Commissioner Handler that the minutes be approved. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. One thing you'll notice on the meeting minutes from last month that I'll try to do next, this time as well is there actually is a, we actually require a motion to adjourn the meeting. It's, it's in our book here, so I'll try to follow that. Like, I don't think we followed it very often. I know I haven't followed it in the past, but I'll try to follow that in the past. So at the end of the meeting, I'll actually ask you a motion to adjourn because I think that's actually how the public meetings are supposed to work. So just so you're aware of that. Thanks. The next item on the agenda is any unfinished or old business, and we have none of that. And so we will move right into the first public hearing item. The first public hearing item is code amendment residential design standards phase one, which is master file CA 2022-001. And I believe we'll have Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. The city is conducting, as you know, a pretty significant update to the zoning code. This item is regarding phase one, which is a effort to update the residential design and development standards, particularly with the focus on multifamily housing. The, on page one of the PowerPoint here, you'll see that the objectives of this effort are to offer a variety of living and housing choices, promote a variety in site and building design, increase design standards and simplicity, and again, an emphasis on the built and natural environment. And so we'll get, moving on with the presentation here. The background a little bit is that in February, we went over lot sizes, building orientations, parking and driveway design. Last month, you may recall the presentation from our consultant Onazan Associates, who provided an in-depth overview on neighborhood design, site design, and building design. And again, for the public hearing, this is putting everything together in the first public hearing and overview of the proposal. So on the next slide, talk about corner lot residential. And the way we've broken down this presentation is to have a quick item on what the regulation or the guidance is intended to do with some brief description of any proposed changes. And so with corner lot residential standards, the idea is to mitigate and decrease blank or dull effects on the public-facing right-of-way. And so we can accomplish that by implementing or requiring design features for single-family, multifamily housing and requiring that the public-facing street side shall not be used for the backside of the building. Later on in the presentation, you'll actually see an example of that, of what we are trying to prohibit or mitigate here. And for those on the larger side of developments, particularly multifamily or multiplex and apartments, that corner lot designs would feature some landscaping treatments. So next, we'll discuss residential streets and landscaping. And the idea here is to create a buffer and minimize the maintenance necessary with some of the landscaping appropriate with local climate. And I do want to point out that a lot of these regulations in some form or fashion already exist in the municipal code, but they're not in one place. And so on the development side, both as the applicant and on the staff side as a reviewer, we're constantly shuffling between multiple portions of the Pasco municipal code. So another intent up here again is simplifying it and putting it all in one, in one place, at least a relevant location. So with residential street and landscaping, we can accommodate that by requiring that the adequate landscaping is provided at the time of development and that it is maintained either by the property owner or the HOA or whatever the mechanism is there. And that we do have a new provision where increased sidewalk space or increased sidewalk width may count towards landscaping, the landscaping requirement as well. And you can see on the top photo, an example, this is multifamily, where you've got kind of that, that nice buffer with the right-of-way, the street, the shoulder, the street trees, curb, sidewalk, and then the units themselves. And on the bottom, on the single-family development, where we have the street, sidewalk, and the yard. And so we're trying to increase some of the landscaping opportunities around the community. Lot size is, as self-explanatory, the minimum lot size. Right now, we regulate lot size by the, by the applicable zoning district. And so we still intend to do that, but we also want to add additional guidance and parameters for the building type itself. And this has become necessary, as you may recall, back in, for most of 2020 and 2021, there was a significant effort to allow for more housing types across all residential zoning districts, which was adopted by council in January of this year. But along those lines, we did not specify lot sizes for different varying, the different various types of housing units, whether they were cottage housing, triplexes, multiplexes, et cetera. So the intent here is to prescribe lot sizes based on the housing type within the applicable zoning district. And do want to point out that based on council direction too, that the densities are still regulated by the Pasco Comprehensive Plan. So everything will still be in line with what we've adopted as a community or as a city. And on the next slide is a table of what that looks like. Primarily, most of the changes are in the R3 and R4 districts because that is where the more, the density is encouraged. And certainly, we will see most of it. And you can see a proposal to decrease the lot size on single-family, both detached and detached in the R3 to 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit and a decrease in the R4 from 4,000 to 2,000 square feet per dwelling unit. And that kind of carries on throughout the rest of the zoning code. I want to point out though, on the cottage housing, which right now in the R1 zoning district, you, well, not permitted, but in the R2, for example, you could place a cottage housing, which we define as three or more housing units with centered around an open space or courtyard or something along those lines would be permitted on the a 10,000 square foot lot, but we would intend to allow that for every five dwelling units. And you can see how that carries on again with increasing amount of units with the appropriate amount of lot sizes. So we don't want to, I guess the word would be encroach within a lot or kind of crunch things into a lot. The idea is to allow them to occur, but with the appropriate landscape, I'm sorry, lot size applicable for the housing type. The next slide, we talked about lot frontage and lot width. And these are two very similar but slightly different guidelines here. We already have these in the codes. So again, these similar to lot sizes would be revised based on the housing type themselves within the appropriate zoning district. And again, as indicated on the slide, the idea is to allow for the adequate lot width and access for entry parking and also just the typical access points itself. And so we can accomplish this by requiring the public frontage, as is already required in the municipal code. And then we also have recommendations for, depending on the housing type, to encourage that they use a shared driveways or even the alleyway access as long as, again, that they are designed based on the municipal code or the designing construction standards. On the next slide, you'll see what that looks like based on the unit or housing type on the left and the zoning district and the minimum lot frontage and width, which we are proposing to keep the same for simplicity, for simplicity sake, really. So for example, a townhome in the R2 district would require 40 feet of frontage or width. And in the R4 would require 30 feet, or I'm sorry, 25 feet per unit. And then how that cascades based on the zoning code and the unit type itself on the page. On the next slide, well, this is an example of what that looks like. And we'll, we'll provide this PowerPoint to the commission following the meeting. You can see what this looks like and what we would expect to see when we do our review from the applicant. On the left, you see the single, a typical single-family detached. And then that second photo is a single-family detached, but with a shared driveway. And then you can see townhome example on the right. So the next slide, we'll talk about building setbacks. And this is probably one where we are proposing to make a more significant change. And again, the idea of a setback is allow for the efficient use of the lot, but with the variety of housing types, but to keep some distances away for a variety of fire code, safety code, et cetera. So we are proposing to reduce the minimum rear yard setback to 15 feet. This is a standard that exists in the City of Kennewick and many other municipalities across the state and other communities as well. Currently, the City of Pasco requires a rear setback of equal to dwelling height. So if you have a 40-foot tall building or, or home, 35-foot home, you need a 35-foot rear setback. And so it's one of those things where technically, yes, your housing type or housing product is allowed, but when you get down to the lot level, it's not, it's not, it just can't work. And so we're trying to make that a little bit more feasible and also use a standard that is available elsewhere too. There's also another change to the minimum front yard setback for the living portion of the unit to be 15 feet and then allowing a 20-foot setback for the garage. And what that does is it helps allow for more variety in housing type. I think actually on the next slide, you'll see an example of what that could allow. Where typically right now, I guess not, my apologies for not showing the photo, but the intent is to allow for homes to not necessarily have the garage be the dominant feature of the home itself. It's still allowed if the builder or the, the home producer would like to do that, but it's not a requirement. Today, it is. And so we would allow for some additional flexibility there. That's also a, a code that was part of the waterfront development district that you may recall from a couple of years ago too. On the next slide, again, some, some general examples for, for entrances. This is more particular or more emphasized on the multifamily side and the idea is to establish some guidelines for vehicle and pedestrian entrances to the site, the building itself, along with some guidance for lighting and access. So some of the mandatory elements would be that the access shall be provided via public street or legal access or easement. This is already a requirement, but again, putting it here, that the accesses shall be visible from the public street. That seems like a fairly common sense or a logical requirement, but it's not in our codes. We would like to add that in there for clarity. And then again, additional emphasis on pedestrian entrances with landscaping, special pavement treatment, signage, or features, depending on the type of product that is or development that is proposed. On the next slide, building orientation. So this is where the building faces how it lies within the site itself in connection with the public street. This has to do a little bit more with the built environment, the public realm, and establishes guidelines for that location of the building within the lot. And some of the mandatory elements would include that the building is oriented towards the public street and open space. This is already in the code, although it's not written that, it's not described that clearly. So we would like to introduce that into the code. And then some of the recommended, recommended components would be that buildings could be clustered or consolidated around an open space in combination with the public street and that corner-facing developments facing the public street could be treated or encouraged to be treated with additional landscaping, pedestrian entrances or other design or amenity features as the developer wishes to. On parking and driveways, this is a big focus of this part of the code as well, and there's more to come on this. But the idea here is to identify standards for onsite parking, including the location screening, the access, depending on the housing type. And so right now for multifamily, we have a requirement that no parking may be located in the front. And, and the intent there is so that the dominant feature from the public street is not a giant parking lot, so to speak. That in theory is, is great, but we would like to add a little bit of flexibility there too, depending on the unit type as housing products are changing all the time. And so we would like to introduce a maximum parking percentage that could be located in the front. And we'll follow up with the planning commission based on your direction and what we would feel comfortable moving forward with. We would identify some screening and buffer requirements, as you can see in both of those photos. And the one parking requirement that we are proposing in this effort would be a reduction of off-street parking for studio apartments or dwellings. So right now, we require two off-street parking spaces for every unit, including studio apartments. And so that we would propose for now to reduce that to one. On the next slide, again, some additional guidance for pedestrian circulation within the site. And as the city continues to entertain new development types, this is one that we're seeing a little bit more pressure on to, to have a better access and quality within a development itself. So the idea here is to create guidelines for access within the site, addressing locate, addressing the locations, lighting and maintenance of the pedestrian network within the site. Must be clearly visible. And the one additional requirement here that's would be added that doesn't already exist would be the minimum width of a five-foot sidewalk or pathway or some kind of network for tenants, residents, visitors, et cetera, to have a safe place to walk within the site itself. On open space and landscaping and signage, both of these are in a code. We would just like to consolidate these into the applicable locations within development standard. Open space and landscaping, again, somewhat self-explanatory, but identifies guidelines for open spaces within the development. Same with signage. We would just, now this is different than the sign code, although we would make sure that we would be in conformance with the existing sign code too. So I just want to be clear on that as well. And height, bulk, and scale, this is an area that we focused on quite a bit at the last meeting. I mean, the idea here is to have regulations that while still allowing flexibility for the designer, the developer, the builder of the product, to create something that's unique or innovative or that works based on the market. But we also don't want to be overbearing as well. The design, what the design standards is to have standards, but not, we are not the designers. We're not the architects and we don't want to take over that role. But we do want to provide some parameters so that we do get quarterly products here in the City of Pasco. So the design here is for minimal modulation and within the building, so how the building changes throughout its facade, along with extended or very lengthy roof lines where there's some breaks within the roof line itself. Again, we, we want to be careful with this because every time we introduce a different roof line or a different modulation within the facade, that's new material. And new material costs additional funds. And so we want to make sure we're not trying to increase the cost of housing at the same time trying to address housing itself. So hopefully that answers any question regarding the height, bulk, and scale component of the, of the effort. And finally, a timeline. So February through April, although this began in late 2021, we went through some planning commission workshops. This is our first public hearing. There is no, the recommendation from staff today is to continue the hearing so that we can have additional time to work with both the planning commission, hear from the public, work out any refinements as necessary to the code and with an intent of taking this to council with the recommendation early summer. I do want to point out that this is a pretty significant update to the Pasco zoning code, particularly the, the creation of new zoning, I'm sorry, design standards. But they are intended to be a response to what the market is demanding. We do entertain applications where we're not sure where they fall in our code because our code doesn't address them. And that isn't the case in other communities. So we certainly don't want to remove ourselves from having an opportunity to gain new housing types in Pasco. But we, this is a pretty significant change both for staff and, and the development community. So we'd appreciate any input or necessary clarity by the planning commission or the public and have it answer any questions we can this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, are there any questions or specifically any guidance or direction or feedback you'd like to provide to staff regarding this? It is, there's a lot of elements, so even if you have just one, one of the, there's a table of lots of elements, and I know I wrote some notes on a couple of them, but not all. So if you just even have notes on one that you'd like to comment or provide feedback, now would be a good time.
This is Commissioner Mendez. I got a question, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner Comendas.
Yeah, so on the lot size slide, I think the city is proposing that we use the R3, the R4 to 2,000. R3 looks like 2,000 square foot for duplex, flat flex, and four flex from 3,000 square foot. I was just wondering what that would look like, whether it's even feasible to accommodate a duplex, triplex, or fourplex on a lot of smaller size? And is that something that we want? Do we know what that looks like? Do we have a graphic or anything like that?
We don't have a graphic this evening. We certainly provide that at the May meeting. But we, we've, we also have had this question circulating internally with staff. And the criteria of the comprehensive plan conformance is what keeps this from being a really extreme change to the zoning code. So the zoning code, I'm sorry, the, the comprehensive plan tells us what the permitted densities are. And so as long, these changes allow that to be accommodated. Now, if there's, and the chance that it does not, it simply would not be permitted. But I, we will work on getting some examples and also identify how this actually would look as best we can in, in real life.
Thank you. I also have a follow-on question. I didn't see anything related to side setbacks. I thought I saw something from 5 feet to 10 feet. Any changes there?
Lee, we are proposing any changes to the, the side yard setbacks. If anything, what would be in the, the packet itself would be specified distances based on the housing type themselves. I don't, but not anything different than what we already, already reg, not regulate, what we already have in the, in the zoning code.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendez. Any other questions or feedback from the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Campos.
Go ahead, Commissioner Campos.
Yeah, I just want to just appreciate staff working on this, especially working when there seems to be a lot of things that, that we want to make some changes on. But to be working with HBA and getting the feedback from developers is amazing. So I just want to point that out. Appreciate that. Just want a clarification on one question. You had talked about studio. You said to reduce it to one apartment. That's just to studio apartments, right? Not the other ones?
Yeah, that would be just for studio, studio apartments or studio dwellings.
The others would stay at two.
Yeah, currently the requirement is two for any unit, including studio apartments. And that actually makes the, from the development side, if you'd rather just build a non-studio apartment, which leaves a gap in our housing market, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions or feedback? I had a couple of thoughts. I wrote a lot, but I won't go over it all because we have other commission meetings to go over this too. So I think one of the questions I had is, I mean, it seems like this, I mean, I was thinking about it. It, from an aesthetics and safety perspective, there's a lot of benefits from simplifying and consolidating the code. There's a lot of things. The only thing I was wondering about is, the only thing I noticed is are there, it seemed to me that a lot of these things could drive up cost to developers. And so is, I, I think that would be my only thinking is, I, it's really that balance is right. How do we encourage choice? How do we do safety and aesthetics? But then how do we make, you know, these developments or, you know, how, whatever the size catastrophically expensive because of all these things, right? And so I think that would be one piece of, or thought I would have is just trying to balance all that. And I, it sounds like you're trying to do that. And I also noticed in a lot of cases, you're using the guidelines versus standards and you're trying to allow some of that flexibility in there as well. So I think that's good. And I'm sure the developer, development community appreciates that. The last question I had was, is this generally applied to just planned developments? Or does it apply to any, like, if I buy an acre lot and want to put a house, it applies to that too? Is it pretty, pretty any residential or is it just more planned communities, things like that? Because I think, like, even some of the things, like when you, if I had a corner lot that I just bought as an individual property owner and then I had to take on all the overhead of sidewalks and areas and landscape corners and things like that. So I was just curious about the applicability here.
Generally, this would apply to any new residential project, whether infill or brand-new in the urban growth area. These codes, these standards would apply. If there is a concern or a direction to identify any flexibility for variety of units perhaps, then certainly staff can take a look at that. I think the one thing we'd like to be careful about is making sure that we don't have separate standards based on whatever the basis needs to be or is asked to be. I think we just want to be clear so that when we get an application at the counter and it circulates through the review process, that we have a set of standards that generally works for the entire community. Similar to maybe the defense discussion that we've had a couple of months ago. But that is, if that's something that staff should look into, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I mean, my only thing was just trying to think about when I, when you're, when you're buying, you're a developer and you're buying a whole big piece of property and you're developing it into multiple units, it's certainly understandable that you can take the impact of the cost to put landscaping on corners and sidewalks and separated landscaped areas from roads. But if you're an individual homeowner or property owner that says, I want to buy an acre lot and build a home, then that impact is a different, that's a, that's a pretty big cost impact to an individual. And I don't know how to make that more fair, but I also know that I think that it feels like a developer can pass that on, that cost onto the market, the individual just has to eat it, right? And so that's, that's kind of my, that's where I'm thinking. And that's that balance between all these other things and cost, right? So that'd be my only thinking if there's a way to think through that. I don't know what other commissioners, if they have any feedback on that same topic, but that was one thing that caught my eye about this. Thank you. Commissioner Henley.
Is that, when I listen to these things, I'm assuming that this is, these are standards that are going to be applied to any residential development, whether it's single-family or multifamily. However, I think, I think we still have in the code provisions for planned unit development, correct? Where these things can all take, take different shapes. I mean, within reason. Am I correct on that?
Correct. Plan your developments have their own set of standards and flexibilities provided to them.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to point out that in many, matter of fact, in almost all circumstances, using again the single lot concept, there are fixed costs associated with our standards currently. And for the most part, these provide flexibility. There may be some increase in cost, and this gets back to the balance question, of course. But there are, they're not introducing anything that somebody wouldn't be doing today.
Gotcha. That's helpful. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, one last call before we open it up to the public hearing. Anybody else have any feedback or questions for staff? Okay, with that, I will open up the public hearing. Any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now's the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. Once again, I'll ask a second time for any public who want to speak on this item. And finally, the third time, we will close the call for public comment. This one requires no motion because we're going to move it on to a future planning commission or multiple future planning commission meetings. So we will move on to the next agenda item. We were done with the public hearing items, and we move into the workshop. So the first workshop item is a memo on the 2022 Pasco Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Docket.
Yes, and if the planning commission is okay with this, we have, at staff, we've switched the order because we do have a presentation from our downtown consultants. And so we've moved that presentation up to item number A. And then we'll follow up with items B and C, the comp plan and the strategic review. So if that's okay, we'd like to open up with the downtown master plan.
We are flexible, I think.
Thank you so much. So as planning commission may be aware, we presented a few months ago about our first ever comprehensive planning effort for our downtown community. We are working with Framework Consulting to create this plan. It's, has been a significant amount of planning and analysis and engagement that's occurred to date. And today's presentation will provide an overview on the existing conditions along with some of the most recent engagement efforts performed by our consultant team. And with that, I'd like to introduce our consultants, Leslie Bain and Jeff Arango from Framework Consulting. And with that, I'll pass it on to them, and they are, they will be participating virtually.
Great. Thanks so much, Jacob. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jeff Arango, and I am the director of planning at Framework and the project manager for our team. We really appreciate the invite, very much looking forward to speaking with you tonight and giving you an update and an overview of the planning process to date. And I'm joined by Leslie Bain, my colleague at Framework, and she'll speak to a few slides in a few moments. And apologies for any redundancy. I know Jacob has given you a couple of updates already. But just to kind of start from the beginning, these are the elements that are within our scope, with one key addition, all speak to in a moment. So we've just recently completed the existing conditions report, and we'll hit some highlights on that in the presentation. We're in process of developing a new vision and goals for downtown and anticipate being able to roll that out fairly soon here. We'll be developing an action plan, which will be the roadmap for the city to implement the plan, which is an essential part of realizing the vision and achieving the community's desires for downtown. And we'll also include a plan to track progress on implementing the plan so that there's accountability and we have a way to kind of measure how successful we are in achieving the goals of the plan. And then lastly, we've added some additional scope to take a look at Lewis Street within the context of the downtown plan, and we'll present the outcomes of a recent workshop we had on Lewis Street. Next slide, please. So roughly, this is our study area. We do have some recommendations on a downtown boundary and some recommended land use changes. We'll describe in a few moments, but this is kind of what we had to start with. Of course, the larger boundary is the PDA district, the downtown PDA. And then there, in the kind of purplish outline, is the C2 zoning district. That is the only zoning district that has really been developed to be specific to downtown. And we have some recommendations in that regard. Next slide, please. Leslie?
Yeah, this is, thanks. First, I just wanted to say we're really happy to be here and have the chance to talk with you guys. We've really come to love Pasco and so happy to be working here with you and seeing some things happening like Peanuts Park and some recent property acquisitions. It's really great. So in starting out, like, what is the downtown? Where is it? It's interesting to see this, this wonderful early, early plat of Pasco where it really took the geometry of the railroad, you know, which is Pasco's history. And there's an overlay of three grids. There's the downtown grid related to the railroad. There's the north-south streets related to plating the western United States. And then you've got another grid that runs along the river. So it's really interesting. And it really makes downtown distinct with that grid shift. So we're trying to look at what downtown is in the context. The context really is important to us. Okay, next slide. So here's a whole bunch of roads and a river and trains. And it's really interesting to see how downtown sits within all those different transportation connections and discontinuities. So you've got 10th coming across the river. You've got a couple of ways to get across the train tracks. We've got connections to the interstate. And one of the things that really stood out to us was that it's really hard to find downtown Pasco if you didn't know where to look. So as you come across the bridge and you're coming up 10th, which on the transportation map doesn't look like it is a huge arterial, especially once you get past Lewis, it really looks like that when you're in the field. So one of the things that we'd like to observe for you is that helping people spin off to Ainsworth or A Street or Lewis Street or Clark and Columbia would be really helpful, I think. The wayfinding, you guys have been talking about wayfinding, I think, for some time now. But I think in looking at the downtown and how you get there and how you travel to and through it, this is a really interesting way of looking at the city and how we could do some wayfinding that would set downtown out as a distinctive place within Pasco. Okay, next. This is bicycle and pedestrian routes in the master plan we've got going. That, there's some new things going along on Sylvester. We, we think that the connections to that wonderful Sacagawea Heritage Trail, connecting downtown with that wonderful resource would be great. We've been looking at what kinds of bike things could happen in downtown and really would note that there is a grid of streets that includes Lewis and Clark and Columbia and that we can make a system of transportation modes that really is optimized for all the people trying to get to downtown and to stay there and enjoy it. Okay, next. There are some amazing things in Pasco. You guys are so lucky to have the fabric that you do. The history is rich and wonderful. And then, you know, you're not standing still either. Peanuts Park is such an exciting addition. So I think one of the things that we want to do is look at those gems that you have in your community and make sure that they're protected and enhanced and really, really shine within the downtown. Because if you don't have this kind of historic fabric, there's no way to recreate it. One of the things that that leads us to think, and we'll get to this a little bit later, but I just want to prime it a little bit, is that maybe downtown needs to have the boundaries expanded a little bit. The wonderful Franklin County Museum, the former library is a wonderful piece of some historic fabric that maybe should feel a little bit more like downtown. Okay, next. Culture. You are so rich in culture. You know, we see it when you have celebrations. You know, Cinco de Mayo is around the corner, and there's going to be lots of people there, taking over the downtown, using it, enjoying it. And so, you know, if there's stuff to do there, it looks like they'll come. You've got fiery foods festivals and taco crawls. It's really exciting. There's things that you maybe don't have, or that, there's lots of ways I think we could emphasize and showcase and enjoy the culture that you have, the many cultures. We've heard a lot about murals and, you know, it's a little bit of a touchy issue. I think you can do some murals, but they're small. It's part of the sign code. There are other nearby cities that have taken on murals as a way to really amp up the character of their, their community. We think that there are a number of things that you could do. Murals maybe being one of them. Certainly, there's a real Hispanic tradition in murals that we would like to help make sure that those are possibilities for you and not limited in ways that are not maybe so intentional in terms of limiting it. And how we can do that in a way that, that kind of diminishes risks of things going, going the wrong way. Okay, next. Streetscape and open space is something we've been talking about a lot, particularly on Lewis Street, but also Clark and Columbia. You know, you don't just have a one, one street downtown. And there are some really great things going on. There are beautiful stores with beautiful windows. There are a lot of vibrancy that, again, other towns would love to have. Not to say it's perfect. We recognize the gaps that are there. I think people always want a vibrant downtown, you know, and what does that mean? A lot of it means that you've got retail that's strong and healthy. So in looking at the kinds of improvements that might be made in downtown, I think one of the first questions we always look at is, how can this help the businesses? How can this make the people that are invested in your downtown successful? Because that makes the downtown successful. So we're looking at a lot of things about the streetscape. One of the things that we've heard, which we'll talk about a little bit later, I think, is lighting. Safety is an issue. So how can we make these streets feel safer, but more distinctive on the public realm side? Because some of the stores are doing their part with, with their storefronts and hanging baskets, et cetera. Okay.
All right. Thanks. So now we'll go through some of the findings from the existing conditions report. So this map shows the zoning in downtown within the PDA boundary. And one of the things that we think focus on first when we're doing a downtown plan and we're looking at land use and zoning is how specific is that land use designation or zoning to downtown? And the one thing that stands out to us, which I alluded to earlier, is that only the C2 district is really specific to downtown. It's the only district that isn't used elsewhere in the city. And we often find that the urban forum in an older historic downtown really warrants having zoning that's really customized, that's really workable for the private sector to be able to make investments in downtown that are consistent with the plan. So when you look at some of the other districts, the other commercial districts, the residential districts, those are districts that are used elsewhere in the city in, in very different contexts. Next slide. So when looking at, you know, the PDA boundary and some of the land uses and character surrounding that, one thing that's really stood out to us is that area to the north, which is gateway into the city by Volunteer Park on Fourth, really has a lot of the land uses and character that you would typically associate with the downtown. So the city hall, the Amtrak station, the courthouse, beautiful buildings, beautiful open spaces. And we think this would be a great addition to creating a formal downtown boundary. We have some land use recommendations for that. I'll go through in a moment. We also think the area south of the PDA boundary down to the river is really important. We're not necessarily recommending it be a formal part of the downtown boundary at this point, primarily because the land use is quite different. It's all multifamily for the most part. But perhaps that could take on some sort of special place within city plans to recognize its important connection as a bridge between the river and the downtown. So certainly, we're going to have recommendations that encompass that area, but we're not recommending it be a formal part of the boundary at this point, but something that could be considered in the future as a way to focus our efforts kind of in the next five to 10 years. Next slide. So these are some of our key findings. Again, many of the zoning districts are not specific to downtown. So they may have things like parking requirements or setbacks that really don't work within the downtown context. Parking requirements, which Jacob touched on for residential development in the previous topic, are a big deal. And some of those more suburban parking requirements are actually present in downtown and would make it very difficult, if not impossible, to develop some of those small urban lots and meet the parking requirements and still have a development that would be economically feasible. Again, some of the single-family uses in the residential districts is a lack of detailed development and design standards, but looks like that's something that's being addressed through the previous items. We feel good about that. Lots of great ideas presented there. Just a need to have better district standards for design as well in all of the downtown zones and be able to illustrate those effectively in the code, I think, is important. And then last, which is a pretty particular one, but as an example, in the retail district, that includes parts of downtown, there's a 15-foot front yard setback. Again, it's too shallow to really be used for parking. That's generally not the design aesthetic you would be looking for. It renders it, you know, basically undevelopable. And while there are examples of buildings that have a setback and a plaza in front of it as a standard typology, we really think that's problematic within the downtown. So those are just some of the specific examples that we wanted to highlight from our look at the zoning code. Next slide, please. So in terms of recommendations, one of the things we've been working on with Jacob is, as a first step, which is great timing, that we could make some updates to the future land use map that would basically pave the way for new zoning in downtown that would address some of the issues we just described. So it's a little bit hard to see on the map, apologies, but there is a gray border around the core area of downtown and headed up north towards Volunteer Park and encompassing some of the blue parcels there. Yep, within that sort of northern zone. And we think this would be a good initial downtown boundary for which we would create a new future land use category called downtown and develop some policies that would be adopted in the comp plan that would basically create the framework for developing new zoning in downtown. New zoning in downtown that's customized. And some of those strategies could be expanding the C two zone and perhaps renaming it, something that's more recognizable as downtown. Perhaps looking at new zoning districts that would speak to some of those areas. Outside of whatever we decide the C two zone should encompass. And then. The other thing we want to do is address a mismatch between the future land use map and the zoning. So for example, in the middle of the proposed boundary, you see the orange blocks there. That's a future land use category for multifamily. But as you knows, many of the properties that front along fourth are actually commercial. And so even though they have a multifamily, future land use designation, they actually have commercial zoning. Which generally is inconsistent and should be rectified in some way. The other thing that we'd like to do as a way to kind of augment the zoning. Is develop what we call street typologies, which is a way to allow us to kind of vary the zoning based on. The function of the street. So for example. Some of those areas identified in the orange color would actually be multifamily as you get off of fourth. With commercial zoning actually on four. So if, for example, fourth could be designated as a commercial mixed use street. The side streets could be identified as multifamily or residential streets. And then there would be appropriate standards to be able to address. Those different types of developments and how it syncs up with the street. We have some examples that we'd be happy to show at a future meeting. Okay, yeah, I think I hit the high notes there. Next slide, please. Okay, another really important piece of the project is one of our sub consultants, Echo Northwest, who I believe the city's working on. The Housing Action Plan with did a market analysis for downtown. They looked at two areas, the greater downtown Pasco area, which is the dark area in the hatch. In the middle and then the secondary market area, which was a way to kind of compare the findings within the area. Within the core downtown area to the broader area. Next slide, please. And as part of it, they looked at the feasibility for development of a range of land uses you see on the left. So they looked at office, multifamily, retail, industrial flex. Sorry, my camera's going off there. And one of the things we heard kind of early on through some of our stakeholder outreach and at the visioning workshop was that. You know, there has not been a lot of new development. In the downtown Pasco area, you know, the good part of that is you still have a, a number of great historic buildings that really add to the character. But we'd like, of course, to see some new investment as well. And so this chart in the colored bars. So the lighter color bar for each land use shows the feasibility for adaptive. Reuse and the darker bar shows for new construction costs. And then the, the two blue bars, the darker bar shows the rents for. Greater downtown Pasco and the lighter blue shows rents for the secondary market area. And so for something to be feasible, the blue bars have to be within the other colored bars, if that makes sense. And you can see that they're way off to the left, meaning that the rents are much less. In many instances than the cost of either adaptive reuse or new construction. So what this tells us is that development, at least at this time. Is generally not feasible economically in downtown Pasco. But one of the goals of this plan is to start to close that gap and, and there are certainly ways that we can do that. If you look at the bottom of the chart for industrial flex. You'll see that adaptive reuse of industrial properties and the associated rents is actually pretty close. There's not a very big gap there. So that could be something that we could focus on. And there's lots of great examples of using kind of older industrial buildings for. More like people oriented uses, whether that's a brewery or some sort of indoor market, food hall. And, and, and other, you know, lots of ideas on that. So that may be something that we focus on. Kind of more in the near term in terms of the feasibility of development. Next slide, please. So this is just a summary of the key findings. Again, that gap is significant for many of those uses. But the most, the closest to being feasible is that adaptive reuse. So we want to look in the near term at tenant improvements, trying to repurpose existing buildings and space that's currently in demand by the market. I'd say on the positive side, at least from the analysis they did as part of the study, you know, there's not a, a ton of vacancies in downtown. You know, as Leslie said, there's lots of great local businesses, really nice storefronts. I mean, there's a lot that we can build off of. But there's definitely a gap that we want to try to close through this, through this plan. Next slide, please. Okay, now we're going to shift gears a little bit to the Lewis Street Workshop. And, and as I said earlier, this was an additional scope item. From, you know, a couple of months ago, this was added to our scope and we've been sort of gearing up to have. A workshop which we held a, a few weeks ago was very, very successful. This is just a collage of all the people that participated in the event. Which was very fun. We really enjoyed it. And I think we got pretty good feedback from those that participated as well. Next slide, please. So these are some slides, photos from the existing conditions report. We use this in the presentation at the workshop to just set the stage. These speak to, you know, kind of the relationship between vibrant and active streets and sidewalk whiz. And I think, you know, our takeaway is that great streets come in a variety of formats. Lots of great streets have sidewalks that are narrower than we might like. But they have active uses, they're spilling out onto the street. They have, you know. Other nice amenities that could kind of fit into that smaller space and people love it. I think you could find examples of other streets with, you know, much wider sidewalks, but not a lot of the other ingredients that make a good, good street. So the ideal situation, we kind of married those two together. These two examples, one from Wenatchee and, and one from Chelan, I think highlight. What are really attractive and, and great kind of main streets. And you can see in the case of Chelan. The sidewalks are not particularly wide, they're ten feet. The sidewalks on Lewis Street right now, I think are fourteen and a half feet, so quite a bit wider. And, and more similar to what you'd find in Wenatchee. But on Lewis Street, you don't really have a lot of current use of the sidewalk, even though it is allowed under the current code. So that I think is something we want to look at for this upcoming summer season. To be able to hopefully have more businesses using the sidewalks for outdoor seating. Retail displays and those types of things. Excellent. And again, just two more examples, one from Truckee, California, very wide sidewalks, but a lot of kind of physical. Elements, lighting and trees and furniture and those types of things, but very attractive streetscape. On the right hand side is Kirkland Park Place, which kind of is a curbless street and the sidewalks kind of meander. In some cases, they're wide. In other cases, they pinch down to as, as little as six feet here. But, you know, very attractive, very vibrant, lots of activity. People like to go there. It's very hard to find parking as a result of it. But not super generously wide sidewalks in some locations as you, as you see here. Next slide. So we, we did these diagrams, looking at Lewis Street. Basically, what would be allowed under your current code? And there's two examples. The one on the left. Has about a four and a half foot zone for outdoor seating and a ten foot clear area. The one on the right kind of flips that, has an eight and a half foot seating area. So you get a double row of tables. And minimum six foot clearance, which is the requirement in the code currently. We do understand there's one pending application for a business to have outdoor seating. I'm not quite sure the status of that, but this is something we would love to see this summer again. We are looking at long-term streetscape improvements, but there's no reason why this, you know, couldn't happen in the near term. And, and we hope to, to see it happen. Next slide. And then this is an example on Fourth Street, Fourth where you do not have. Fourth app, we do not have as wide of sidewalks, so they're only eight and a half feet. So there really would not be the opportunity to put out seating. This would be a potential option to create a parklet that would be associated with the restaurant and could have outdoor seating and food service. We do want to note this is somewhat of a poor example because there is a hydrant there. And so if this, a concept like this move forward, you know, we would of course find a location that wasn't in conflict with. With the hydrant access and life safety. But we think for streets like fourth that do not have the generous sidewalks and. You know, would take more significant redevelopment and able to provide them, the parklet option is, is one that we consider. And this would be something that would have to be authorized in city code. It's not something that's, I think, allowed currently. Excellent, please. Okay, so some of the findings from the workshop. Safety is fundamental to the future success of Lewis Street and I would say more broadly to the, to the success of downtown. This is something we heard quite extensively at the visioning workshop as well, in addition to the specific Lewis Street workshop. More diversity of uses are desired. Certainly, the, all of the local businesses are beloved currently. But they want more diversity, more restaurants, more hangout spots, a coffee shop, outdoor dining. Those types of things that you typically associate with the downtown and which really can be a magnet for activity. And for bringing more people downtown on a regular basis. How do we take the activity and the success of some of those major events and try to. You know, recreate that on more of a daily basis. I think these types of uses that were suggested by the community are, are definitely a way to do that. There were some concerns around truck traffic and that it be routed away from Lewis Street. As Leslie described earlier with the diagrams, there's lots of options. Which particularly with some improved wayfinding for truck routes, not to have to go through downtown and be able to access. The other side of the tracks. Our impressions is that there's not necessarily a lot of. Truck traffic that's currently using Lewis Street, but that could potentially change with the new overpass. So it's something we want to be mindful of. As we prepare the downtown plan and plans for the Lewis Street. Excellent, please. Variety of streetscape elements are desired. We have a slide on that from the live in a moment, from some live polling that we did. But there was some. Preference certainly for lighting scored very high, but all of the elements you see listed there are all favored by the community. And then Lewis Street should support property investment along the corridor. So is Lewis Street as a streetscape project potentially a way to, to close part of that gap in terms of the development feasibility? Perhaps, but that really any streetscape project should, as Leslie said early, support the businesses. And support investment along the corridor. Those are two of the primary purposes. And then the last one, access and mobility in bikes is important for downtown. Certainly whether there's, you know, dedicated facilities on Lewis Street or other streets, we certainly want to. Enhance access and mobility for bikes within downtown. Using the existing network that is in place today. Next slide. So these were the workshop goals that we just presented to the public early on, so they knew what the purpose was. Wanted to hear from the community, wanted to share information and our observations about Lewis Street. We want to consider all options. This was not just an exercise in picking A, B, or C. This was really listening to the community. We didn't present any design concepts at the meeting. It was really their opportunity to be able to share with us what they would like to see for their downtown. And then our task is to integrate Lewis Street, whatever concepts we come up with into the downtown master plan. You know, once we've able to get further feedback from the community during the process. Excellent. So the project goals, we want to create a safe and welcoming street, support thriving local businesses. Make it easy and enjoyable for people to come to Pasco. Improve infrastructure for lots of activities, you know, the park did a great job of making it easy to hold events. Have lighting, things like that. Could we do that on Lewis Street as well? And provide a great experience that reflects Pasco's people and culture and support the community vision and goals for downtown Pasco, which is currently in development. Next slide, please. Just very briefly, this was our schedule. We set up and we're hanging out for a couple of hours. We gave our presentation and we did the live polling, which will show results in a moment. And then we had a design exercise. Which was really fun and a brief report back from that and we'll show you those results. Next slide. So this was our study area. The Lewis Street Streetscape Project is focused on the kind of dark inner boundary there, the three blocks. From second to fifth. But we also are looking as part of the downtown plan at Clark Street and Columbia as well. Kind of looking at how those streets can function as what's called a layered network. So different streets can have different functions within the downtown based on land use, transportation. And those types of things. And then we're also considering, you know, how in the future could, could any improvements be expanded? Out towards the west and that's what the Red Hatch area is. Excellent. So this was the live polling results. People were asked questions and responded on smartphones. And the attendees could see the results populating in real time on the projection screen. So this was asked, question asked, how well do you think Lewis Street is working right now? One would be poorly, five would be great. And interestingly enough, you know, most responses were three, which is, you know, working fairly well. But also a number of people said one and two, which is, you know, which is fairly low. The average score was two and a half. So, you know, it's working okay, but it seems like there's certainly room for improvement. Excellent. And then this is the poll question I alluded to earlier, asking people to rank these in the following order of priority. So lighting kind of goes back to the. Feedback we got on the importance of safety. And lighting can be in a variety of formats, right? It can be sort of your formal pedestrian lighting, but it can be also artistic. Type lighting or the twinkle lights, you know, over the roadway, lots of different things that could be done, but lighting, more parking. Typically a favorite amenity in a downtown, wider sidewalks, bike facilities, public art, seating landscaping, I think all scored. Quite high. And so I think it tells us that these are all important elements to consider for Lewis Street. Excellent. The last, one of the last questions we asked was, what would you like to see for Lewis Street to support your local business? This was just an open text response. So people were just typing in, they showed up as sort of speech bubbles and scrolled on the screen. And it's a lot of, you know, comments that I think we've already touched on a little bit, but people wanted outdoor seating. Welcome signage, which kind of ties in also with the wayfinding and how do you find downtown or know you're there. Outdoor seating, coffee shop, more trees, providing shade, really important in the hot summer months. Murals and public art, bench seating, coffee shop, wine tasting, a stage or amphitheater, if you know, something. That's being considered for concerts in Peanuts Park. So again, a lot of stuff we've already touched on. Next slide, I think there's a few more results on the next one. Safe environment, outdoor dining, music. So again, it's, it's really all about more activities and more reasons for people to come downtown. I think, you know, the stage is set for, for all of this to be able to happen. We just got to kind of get everyone going in the right direction, get the private sector. Making investments in downtown and, and certainly the city and the PDA during, doing their part. Excellent, please. So the, we did a design exercise and you can see the instructions down at the bottom. But basically people take, they got into small groups and they had large printed out maps. So in blue, they highlight assets. Those are things in downtown that we want to protect or preserve. It could be a historic building or Peanuts Park or whatever. And then the red areas are challenges. So those are things we want to improve. Those could be vacant buildings or buildings in disrepair. Really, again, anything that respondents wanted to tell us in black are potential future connections. So it could be an enhancement in an alley or improving a, a connection along the street. And then we had image books of different types of development. Both buildings and kind of streetscape elements that people could cut out and kind of collage. On the maps to highlight things that they would like to see and maybe generally where they would like to see them. So this is kind of the composite map. Of all of the different groups and you can see, you know, lots of assets highlighted, which I think speaks to some of the great qualities that are downtown. Also, you know, some red spots, certainly identifying things that we would like to improve. As well. Next slide, please. And we can just kind of scroll through these kind of quickly. This is just to give you an example of what the product looked like. From the different groups, really fun to kind of see all the images and comments. On these sheets next. The one on the right, I'll just give one call out to, we've never had a group actually take the image. We've never had a group actually take the image book and go 3D with it. So even though it wasn't part of the exercise, we had a particularly creative group who who took the images and created some 3D. So kudos to them. Next slide please. And you just see again, some of the more more of the images. We do have a a summary of the workshop. That will be available if it's not already online. So you can get a closer look at at some of these great inputs from from the public. Next slide please. And then I think this is one of our last one, but we took all the comment cards and we used a tool called Merow. This is what's called a mind map. So you kind of take the different elements and create this diagram of of the feedback that we heard from people. So things like art and business development and sidewalks and street, this is kind of like a roadmap of of all of the input that we heard from folks. So again, for those of you that would like to review it in more detail, this, you know, will be available at some point to review as part of the the workshop summary. Next slide. And then just in terms of process, so we're sort of done the existing conditions phase. Again, we had to pivot a little bit to do the Lewis Street workshop. We're currently working on some concept plans for Lewis Street as an outcome of the vision workshop. We'll need to get some feedback from the public on those. And then within a couple of months, we'll have a draft plan and an open house. Where we can get feedback on both Lewis Street and the draft plan itself. Before we move into the legislative review process and developing the final plan based on the feedback that we got from the open house. We'll also provide an online. So I think, you know, we're planning to have an in-person open house, but we'll also provide an opportunity for an online open house for those that would like to participate that way. So we look forward to that in the next couple of months. Next slide. So that is the end of our presentation. Again, there's a project website that the city has been managing. So you can refer to that for additional feedback. You're always welcome to contact us. If if anyone has questions or comments or feedback, we'd love to hear from you. And with that, we'd be happy to turn it back over and open it up for discussion and answer any questions that you may have. So thanks again for the opportunity to to be here and work on this project with you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. O'Rango and Ms. Bean for your presentation and for all the work. Pretty great stuff to see. And I'll open it up on this item. First, is there any more you wanted to add from a staff perspective for this, Jacob?
No, we we wanted to have the framework team present to the planning commission because you haven't heard from them yet. And I think the the length and I think the detail of this presentation itself points out how important the downtown part is to Pasco. And so again, we would certainly love to answer or hear anything from the planning commission. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. Yeah, it was exciting to look through some of this stuff and see like, yeah, I'd like some of that and I'd like some of that. Yeah, there's a lot of great ideas that got generated. So commissioners, are there any feedback or questions you have for the team? Commissioner Hedler.
Yeah, this is all very exciting and and I'm sorry I missed the workshop. I don't know where I was. But it's, this is all going in the right direction. And I said this before and I'm going to say it again. What you're doing is is terrific and 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 helping a lot with with the future of downtown Pasco. What, with all due respect, what what I don't see and 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 I've been in that about this for many years. In in the successful downtown plans that I've seen, there is a significant element, component of housing in and around these CBDs, for lack of a better phrase. And and what I think would be nice, what I would like to have, what I would like to see as 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 some some thinking is identifying potential sites or buildings that could be either adapted or demolished and creating multiple sites in and around this this very important area in downtown Pasco. Where you could, where developers could be enticed to come in and develop housing. Specifically multifamily housing. And and I think that that would would help create a more healthy environment for a downtown like Pasco to flourish 24/7. Not shut down at six o'clock at night, but have people living in and around there, taking care of it. And 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 wanting downtown Pasco to be a great place for 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 everybody to enjoy and use all the outdoor seating. But anyway, so that's that's an element that I don't see in this in this plan. And I beg your pardon, I'm not trying to insult you in any way. I I I just think there needs to be more thinking about that in 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 this planning going forward for Pasco. I won't, I won't take up any more time. But that's just some of my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hedler. Great feedback. Staff or team want any response or want to provide any?
We very much agree and and thank you for that feedback. And this tonight was mostly focusing on the existing conditions in the Lewis Street workshop. So we haven't forgotten the housing and we look forward to having good discussions about that.
Yeah, agreed. And a couple, I'll just make a couple additional comments. One, we were actually talking about this issue today. And the related effort of the Housing Action Plan. That's just getting underway and sort of the need to coordinate with that process. And exactly what you said, the benefit to downtown of having more housing. So I think, even though it wasn't reflected in the presentation tonight, it is something that we're definitely going to address. And it's sort of embedded in some of the land use recommendations and zoning recommendations that are still in process. So we really appreciate the feedback. We completely agree and will continue to work on that issue and ensure that it's it's embedded into the plan.
Excellent. Great to hear. Thank you. Other commissioners, any feedback or questions?
Hi, this is Commissioner Bowers.
Hi, Commissioner Bauer. Go ahead.
I applaud all the observations and collecting of assets in downtown. It was really great. I agree with Commissioner Handler's comment about housing. And I'm just curious, what was done to engage the Spanish speaking population?
Well, most of the outreach to date has been the visioning workshop and the Lewis Street workshop and the survey. We do have some additional resources that were added as part of Lewis Street for some stakeholder outreach and focus groups. Which would allow us to do targeted outreach, including to the Hispanic community that was not in our scope previously. So at this point, it's been mostly people that would have participated in those other events as well as some business outreach that one of our sub consultants had completed early in the process. So that's that's where we're at today on that issue.
I'd like to add to that, that the materials that we put together have all been translated. And we had at my table at the the Lewis Street workshop, a very lively, only in Spanish discussion, which was was really great. We had translators at both open houses. So we we do care very much about reaching with and communicating with the Hispanic speakers.
Thank you. Glad to hear that you have have thought of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauer. Other commissioners, questions or comments, feedback?
This Commissioner Campos, I just want to say that this is really exciting and was really just thrilled to see all the different perspectives that you bring to offer all the changes. We all know here that downtown can be an amazing place and has so much to offer. And so you highlighted much of it and you already have showed that with some with some tweaks to it. I think we can do some amazing things in downtown. I do want to mention, not necessarily for this meeting, but it looks like we're having some tech issues. Commissioner Lerman looks to want to say something, but her muke is, her mic is muted. It says muted by organizer, so she can't talk right now.
Thank you for that. We'll look at it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Campos, for your help on that. I just want to echo what some of the other commissioners have said. I had the opportunity to attend, I remember it was right after parent teacher conferences. And I zipped on downtown to get to the downtown planning opportunity for the community to speak out and share their their input. And I was impressed with the amount of people that showed up and it was a very diverse room. And I thank you for all of your guys' effort coming from the framework, Leslie and Jeff, and also from City of Pasco, the planning commission. And you guys just did a fantastic job. You can tell like people were enthusiastic to be there. And we're hopping up, going to the different tables to be able to share out their ideas and each other. And talk about their their own vision for downtown Pasco. And so thank you for all your guys' hard work and all the outreach. And I also want to piggyback off of what Commissioner Bowers had mentioned about your guys' outreach to the Hispanic community. And making sure that you provide translators and opportunity for their voices to be heard. Continue to encourage our City of Pasco and those that they partner with to also consider other languages that meaning to be presented to. You guys mentioned a lot about Peanuts Park and about the gem it is of downtown Pasco. And that is Peanuts, also known as Mr. Fauca Mora. And so not very many people talk about his ethnicity and his contributions and his honor. That Peanuts Park is named after. And so continue to keep reaching out to all of our diverse residents. And thank you very much for your hard work and inclusion practices.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Any last comments or feedback on this workshop item before we move on to others? Anybody else on the?
Commissioner Mendez, I have a question and a comment, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mendez.
Yeah, so I just want to understand, besides the the public workshops where did the consulting team do any kind of surveys or knocking knock on doors to get information from the residents about how they felt about the downtown area? I thought I heard something related to that, but I wasn't sure. I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, we did do an online survey. I believe those results are in the existing conditions report, which was posted online. I did not include the results in the presentation tonight because I thought maybe the commission had already seen those results. But we can work with Jacob to make sure those are transmitted to you. So we did do the survey and then, as I said, there was outreach done by one of our subs that was primarily to the business community. And then we have some resources that were additional as part of the scope for Lewis Street to do some additional stakeholder outreach, which we have not done yet. But we will essentially do what you described, which is going to to meet with the business owners and and other stakeholders one-on-one or in small groups.
Yeah, and to add to that, we came out for two of the last farmers markets of the year, last ball, which was great. I was there just before Halloween and it was really fun. A lot of kids, a lot of candy got eaten, I think. We also have done some interviews with with various stakeholders that the city has set up for us. So I feel like we've actually gotten to know some some folks fairly well. We're also looking to set up a meeting with the art commissioners. So, yeah, we're we're, we love talking to the people that, you know, live and work and run businesses in downtown. So we'll keep doing that as we go forward.
Great, thank you. The other comment that I had was on the page four under public safety. You captured the observation that according to the community, we need to some way somehow address public safety homelessness before we can be be as successful. Like I guess homelessness is a challenge for many cities, including our own. And there have been some incidents in the downtown area lately with police and civilian fatalities that resonate through the community. So yeah, definitely looking forward to hearing some recommendations as to how we can overcome that challenge. But anyways, yeah, congratulations on the on your on your findings and the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mendez, any other comments, feedback, questions? All right, I suspect we'll be hearing more about this in the future and then want to move on to which which item did you want to move up? Do you want to go back to the Pasco Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Docket item?
Certainly.
Okay.
Greetings again, members of the planning commission. This is just a memo to to the planning commission this evening. Sort of to prepare for the next several months about the establishment of the docket and then the evaluation of proposals to amend the Pasco Comprehensive Plan. As has been discussed at prior meetings, there was a an update to the review and evaluation process for amendments that's to comply with the State Growth Management Act. So this is that in implementation form. It's a two-step process with both the planning commission and council. One, to establish the docket. Meaning that these are the proposals that we have have accepted and will review. And then there's a review part, which the the decision is made by the planning commission, a recommendation from the commission with a decision by the city council. And so I wanted a quick update of where we're at. To date, we've received 11 private applications. So private development applications to amend the future land use map. We received six applications as of the date of this staff report. I think that's eight or nine as of this morning. And and we've issued, I think as of this morning, also six determinations of completeness. So it's a very document and formal oriented process. And the intent is so that both the applicant, staff, the planning commission and council have a a comprehensive look at everything being submitted. In addition to the applications that we've received from the private development side. We will also be entertaining city initiated amendments to amend the comprehensive sewer plan, the addendum to that plan. Land use changes associated with both the Broadmoor and as you just heard, the downtown Pasco master plan. And then several land use and zoning consistency changes that sort of addresses what was mentioned in the prior presentation where we've got a land use, but with the underlying zoning that either is inconsistent or not applicable for a variety of reasons. And so we'll be approaching 15 or 15 plus applications by the end of this. Each application does require a decision, both on the establishment and the application and also the evaluation itself. So this is more of just a heads up that the May meeting may be a little bit longer. So if there's any questions on this, happy to answer them today. But there will be a lot more on the applications as we move forward this summer.
Thank you. So we have, we have six external and four internal, I guess, if we're right. We could add more by May 2nd.
The 11 is private, the bullet points below are in addition too.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And will the, as of this morning, you said six have been complete, determined, complete? Will will, is there public record of those or will we review those just at the May meeting?
The May meeting will be actually on the next slide. I think it's on the next slide. Yes. So today's just an update. There will be a workshop in May and then at the public hearing in June. That's where properties, property owners adjacent to the site will be notified of the public hearing about a proposed land use action. And it's important that we wanted to clarify that it's not a project specific application. So there is no project identified. There may be one in mind. But well before that is started, you need a land use change. And so that is strictly to review the land use itself.
Great, thank you. And I expect some of these we'll recognize from the comprehensive plan discussions a year or two ago.
Likely.
All right, commissioners, any questions or feedback? All right, hearing done. We'll go to the last workshop item, which will be the strategic, I'm sorry. Yeah, the strategic review, Community Economic Development Department.
And good evening, one last time, commissioners. This is another memo about another effort. Good evening, one last time, commissioners. This is another memo about another effort that the planning, I'm sorry, the planning department or the Community Economic Development Department is working on. We've contracted with the Mahoronda Group and consultant Patrick Ibarra, who has been a speaker and facilitator for many city events, not only at Pasco, but across the country, to help us develop an understanding of our department, our interactions are with ourselves as staff, with planning commission, council, the code board, and with our community as a whole. And so as a very busy and broad department with our hands on all sorts of different items, it's important for us to take a look at what those operations and what that looks like as our community has grown from, you know, 20,000 in the mid 90s to 40,000 in the early 2000s to just under 80,000 as of today. And as you're well aware of, you know, well over 100,000 in the coming years. So this is an opportunity for us to take both an inward and outward look at how we operate, engage with, with our stakeholders, our community members and with ourselves. And the crux of this presentation is to inform you that we do want to have the planning commission have an opportunity to speak with Patrick. He did a presentation with city council last week and, and is, will be meeting with them one-on-one virtually. And we would also like to extend that invitation to the planning commission and the code enforcement board. So with your permission and in participation, we would like to begin coordinating those meetings as well. It's an opportunity for you to share your, your thoughts, your input, comments, et cetera, with, with Patrick Ibarra as well. So no further presentation from me this evening on this item, but again, happy to answer any questions I can about it.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, it sounds like a great opportunity to not only look inward about how you're doing things, but also see benchmark, are you properly staffed for the volume and load you have too. So that's good. I think maybe what I'll ask commissioners, is there anybody that has, I am fine with talking to Patrick, but is there anyone that has an objection might be the better way to do it. And if there are no objections, I guess we'll just turn. So anyone have any feedback or objections to being interviewed? Hearing none, I guess you can move forward with anybody you like.
And, and Mr. Chairman, Patrick will be, of course, interviewing city council or maybe even has some, interviewed some already. In addition to the code board, he's conducted several interviews with people, our, our customer group. Just today, Jacob and I thought of maybe two other commissions that would be appropriate for him to interview as well. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information gathering going on this, this spring here. Yeah.
Sounds like a great opportunity. Any commissioners have any comments, questions or feedback on this workshop item?
This is Commissioner Bowers.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bauer.
So is Mr. Ibarra going to be doing a presentation to the planning commission or just scheduling interviews with us?
He'll, he'll be, he'll be interviewing Commissioner.
Looks like we get a report later.
Yeah, we'll get a report. My guess is that there'll be a, some kind of final report to city council. Not sure what form that will take right now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bauer, anything else? Or anyone, anything else? All right. Well, that concludes our workshop items. Is there any other business that staff had to raise? Any other business from the commissioners? All right, hearing nothing else. And with no further items, I would recommend a motion to adjourn.
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Go ahead.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Second that.
Excellent. With the motion moved and seconded, the meeting is adjourned at 8:05. Thank you, everyone.